Hey, you're all set.
Alrighty, I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 20th Town Council meeting to order. Like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands one nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice for all. Alrighty, good evening, everyone. I do have one letter of condolence to read. This is for Mr. Thomas P. Moran. Upon his passing on October, excuse me, on September 22nd, 2020. Mr. Moran served in HQ Company 28th Infantry Division, 7th Army, United States Army, Republic of Germany, during the Korean War. Like that will moment of silence for Mr. Moran, as well as any other veterans or first responders. Thank you. Alright. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 308A, paragraph 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place this meeting. The Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 6th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second. And move in a second? Any discussion?
None.
None.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Um, before I go on, I just want to make people aware that myself, Counselor Fitzgibbons, Counselor Wood, and Counselor Souza are actually in the council chambers using our technology, so if we're out of focus or come out of picture, I'm already trying to adjust things as I sit forward and back, please bear with us. Um, any, okay, announcements from the president. So, uh, future town council meeting start times, what I'd like to propose, and if we need to discuss it, that's fine, is at least for the remainder of 2020, to keep our starting times for the council meetings for seven o'clock. Um, I know that we had kept 7:30 on the docket for people that were obviously coming in person, coming from town, um, giving them enough opportunity to get here, but I think at least for the remainder of this year, and as we get closer to next year, we can look at it maybe making a permanent decision, but to keep the meetings till seven o'clock, 30 minutes is a lot for a long day for all of us. But at least for the remainder of this year, I'd like to keep it at seven o'clock. Other, are there any, any input, any discussions, any objections? Okay, seeing none? Moving on. Do not have any proclamations? Citizens, open forum. Uh, if there are any citizens who would like to speak, all I ask is please keep it to three minutes or less. Uh, also, um, if you would state your name and your street for the record, that would be great. Are there any citizens here for open forum? Go ahead, Sam.
Hi, good evening, Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. I just wanted to take a minute to give a shout out to Police Chief Del Monte. As you know, the Bridgewater Citizens for Cility and Respect has been working with you, the council and the town manager. Uh, first, of course, to get, um, a committee formed, hope in time to study diversity, inclusion, and equity issues. Uh, but also with all the, uh, attention that police departments have gotten, we've had a committee of people meet with Chief Del Monte, and we've met with him twice now for probably a total of two and a half to three hours. He likes to talk a lot, and we have a lot of questions to ask. Mr. Dutton said it on the part of the last meeting as well. But we've just been, um, trying to learn more about police training, higher practices. Some of the statistics that they keep on arrests and stoppage and so on, so we're trying to make sure that our police department is functioning at a high level, which it seems to be. But again, the purpose tonight is just to let you know how open the chief has been answering every question, and we certainly appreciate that and look forward to speaking with him more as time goes on. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Hunt.
Yes, as Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, if later on, when you're under your legislation for action, if you have any questions about the CPC process regarding that action, uh, I'm more than willing to speak out or speak up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I see hand up. Uh, I, I only see is your first name, so Rosemary, just state your name and your street for the record, please, and you're on mute. You're on mute.
On mute, got it.
Got it.
Um, Rosemary Anderson, 25 High Pond, in the High Pond Estates. And I sent a letter to each member of the town council, um, stating that I was very concerned about the conditions of our sidewalks, our roads, and the deplorable amount of trash that has just been collecting and collecting and collecting and never gets moved. And so I was just hoping that maybe something about that would be addressed. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other citizens? Okay. I don't see any, okay, thank you very much. Appointments, we do not have any hearings. It is 7:10. Entertain a motion to open, uh, the hearing for petition P. 2020-019, alteration of premise to Class II Auto Dealer's License, 39 Auto 039 Auto Sales 99, 994 Bedford Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, this requires a roll, and I have to do a roll call vote for this, correct?
Mr. President, I believe you can just open the hearing yourself. I don't think you required a motion, but.
Well, that's good because actually the petitioner is asked to, uh, defer the hearing until our next scheduled meeting.
So the hearing is open, and I'd make a motion then to postpone the hearing till our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Roll call vote.
Uh, Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. We do not have any license transactions, presentations, quarterly update from our finance director, Mr. Solmonte. Mr. Solmonte, the floor is yours. You're on mute.
And I assume I can, uh, share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Tony, do you want to wait for questions till the end, or, uh, do you want them as they occur to us?
Um, I'd like to hold the questions to the end, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll put myself on mute.
Thank you so much. It's going to be very brief, hopefully, uh, can you all see the, uh, the slides?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just, um, just a brief update on where the revenues, uh, ended up for the quarter and where, uh, we are with our expenditures. Um, and that's, those are the only two topics I'll cover this evening. Uh, the revenue highlights will cover property tax, state aid, and local receipts. Um, for those not familiar, 85.38% of our annual revenue this year is going to be coming from our property tax. And we are on track. We collected 26.7% of our projected budget, 12 million eight versus 48 million for the year. Uh, that represents, uh, on a quarter-by-quarter basis, we are now tracking our revenues by quarter, which is going to give us some further insight. Uh, we're, uh, 101.3% of our Q1 projection, uh, 12 million eight thirty-two over 12 million six seventy-four. So some good sign as it relates to our taxpayers making their first quarterly payment. State aid this year is 7.18% of our annual revenue, based on our original projections back in, uh, May. Uh, we did better than budget. But note that the governor's revised budget, which he just recently put out, is greater than our budget estimate. Uh, the state hopes to finalize their budget within the next 30 days. We will make the necessary adjustments when the state budget is in fact finalized. So we were very conservative, we were 10% uh, below FY '20 numbers when we set our budget. The good thing is that we budgeted accordingly, and we were able to balance the budget with that, with that reduction in our, in our projection. Um, the governor, uh, and the body, uh, chose to distribute the first quarter receipts to the municipalities, revenues to municipalities, based on the FY '20 numbers. We had used 10% less of the FY '20 numbers, so you can see why we would be achieving a number greater than our estimate. So we collected 26.7% of our projected budget, 1,078 over 4 million, or 103.2% of our Q1 projected budget, 1,078 over 1,045. Uh, local receipts, uh, this year, 7.4% of our annual revenue is going to be coming from local receipt. There are four major cariety categories that I will, I will highlight, I will reference the others in totality uh, that account for 89, 88 to 90% of these local receipts. We achieved the number better than budget. We collected, although annualized, we collected only 23.1% of our projected budget, 967 of 4,002. Um, but what we understand, when you look at it on an annualized basis, is that our motor vehicle excise tax collections are heavily weighted to the first quarter of, excuse me, the third quarter of the fiscal year, the first quarter of the new calendar year. Those revenues aren't, uh, collected, and it's usually a $2.8 to $3 million commitment that goes out to the taxpayers. So, um, that's why we went to a quarter-by-quarter comparison, so that we can, uh, weight things, uh, properly as they actually come in. So if we look at the quarter, we're 166.6% of our Q1 projection, uh, almost a million dollars versus 600,000. The driver's motor vehicle was up 121K. And in my detailed analysis that I provided to the council members and the finance committee, um, it's important to note that the registry last year went to a, uh, every other month billing, prior to that, there were three or four month billing. So we're reaping the cash flow benefits of that, meaning the commitments are getting out sooner on new car or used car purchases. So what we, we anticipated a little pickup at the beginning of this fiscal year. The big, the big, uh, part of the equation will be what does that large commitment in, uh, the first, uh, quarter of next calendar year or our third, uh, fiscal year, what that looks like. So I'm, I'm still cautious on what these revenues are going to do under motor vehicle excise. Meals tax was up 58K from our original budget. What we did realize is that there's a lot of revenue that was generated from the fast food meals tax, as well as for takeout meals tax. So we were, um, very conservative in our meals tax estimate. And as you can see, as a result, we're showing 58K above that. The room tax was down by 18K. Matter of fact, there was no room tax distributed in the first quarter. I believe that's a holdoff by the state, allowing a rooms tax be held over into the second quarter of this fiscal year. So we don't know how those are going to be negatively impacted until we see the results of the distribution for the second quarter. Penalties and interest on taxes were down 10,000. Uh, we believe that had to do with the, uh, the allowance of the due dates for our motor vehicle excise tax bills and our real estate tax bills. They got pushed out to the end of FY '20, and we think there's a spillover into FY '21. Licenses and permits to our budget were up 119K, and all other categories were up $117,000. Those are our revenue highlights on the expenditure side. Overall, we're at 29% of the budget, but 4% if, if adjusted for, uh, Plymouth County Retirement. Um, and that's the pension, related pension costs. Uh, what we all, what we have done since I've been on board is we pay the entire assessment on the 1st of July. Um, and if you were doing a comparative for budgetary standpoint, you would look at that on a month-to-month basis. But we charge that all off in the, uh, first month of, of the quarter. So that's why your overall, uh, budget expenditure is 29%. Um, but if I adjust it down to 1/12th of the pension cost, we're at 24%. Salaries, wages, and benefits, again, we're currently at approximately 20% of budget, adjusted for PCR, Plymouth County Retirement expenses, we are currently at 26% of budget. And that's what I have. I'll open it to question.
Any questions? Actually, can you take down the presentation so we can get the screen back up so I can?
How's that?
You, perfect. Any questions for Mr. Solmonte?
Mr. George.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Sure, just talking about, uh, the revenue, just going kind of slide by slide, Tony, if you might. Um, obviously, property tax at 85.4% drives the basic revenue of the budget. Right, it's, it's what we can spend.
Yep.
And, uh, so now we're at 101% of projection, uh, for the first quarter. Why, why, why is that? Did we expect, um, something less because of a downturn in the economy, or?
No, the, the way, the way I, uh, did the, the quarter-by-quarter budgeting was I looked at last year's collections as a percent of total collections, and then I took our budget and I allocated by quarter that percent. So if there's early pays in the, uh, 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 some individuals may pay first and second quarter in the first quarter.
Okay, so that, that 1% is not indicative of anything, it's just a fluctuation. Okay.
It's a normal fluctuation.
So state aid, we, we budgeted 10% below, uh, what, you know, the, the, the House won or whatever it was, was, right? And they decided to, the state decided to pay us at least for the first quarter, what House one was, and now they're, they've got a revised projection out there. But essentially, it, it almost holds, holds us harmless, I won't say exactly does. But that's going to drive about 400,000 of, um, positive revenue relative to what we budgeted, correct?
If, if that gets through the.
If that gets passed.
Yeah.
And that'll, that'll drop, that'll drop right down to free cash or, as, at the end of the fiscal year, correct?
Uh, yes, or I may submit a, uh, modified, uh, sources of funds for the operating budget and move that.
Okay, then so it could come back, because we did take a lot from stabilization, so.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, so somehow we, we'll be using that, and it.
Yes.
Either it's already in stabilization and we'll just use it because we know we have it, or it would fall to free cash and it could be distributed, or however that works.
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, local, local receipts. Um, it's my understanding that we've generally tried to have a policy to budget for less than we expected anyway, which would generate free cash and generate an ability to fund various, um, various, uh, stabilization or other reserve funds, so to speak. And that's why you would see such a number like 166% in that category, is that, is that true?
That is true. Um, it's, 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 um, higher based on the quarter comparison, again, because we went very conservative this year, because we did know, did not know what the economy was going to do relevant to, uh, building, construction. So there's just so many, uh, question marks. We were more conservative than, than usual. And yes, that category that we, we typically derive our free cash from.
And, and so then, uh, my last question is on expenses, where we're, we're talking about salaries, benefits, et cetera, being 20% of, of total budget. Is that because we did not fill positions, or, or what's going on there?
Typically, that, that, typically, that's what it is, yes.
So. So, so we budget for the whole year for a position, and if we don't fill it, then we reap that benefit, so to speak.
That's correct, and, and also the number of weeks that are getting expended in the first quarter this fiscal year might be slightly different than the number of weeks in next quarter, so there is.
But it, it should be, it, it, in, in, in an ideal, perfect world, if we had all the employees we want, it would be really, really close to 25%, right?
That, that's, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. All my questions.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher. You're on mute, Mr. Gallagher.
Okay. Just, uh, Mr. President, thank you, just a clarification on state, state rep, state aid, state revenue for fiscal '21. Our budget was 10% less than what we, uh, what was bud, what was budgeted for fiscal '20. Not, not 10% less of what the House one said for fiscal '21, correct? That is correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Mrs. Solmonte, I, I just, so, question for you. On the, the hotel tax, so that the state is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the state's having the, the hotels hold that back, right? Until, until they ask for it?
They, they, they have the option to, yes.
Okay, so if we're 18,000 in the red, is that because we budgeted for 18,000, we haven't received anything, or are you?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So with the meals tax, again, the state, I think, is allowing them to defer it, which I like to explain to people, defers not forgiveness, eventually you're going to have to pay it. Um, we've gotten some funds in, but there could be more money coming to us once the governor says restaurants, hotels have to pay, correct?
Yeah, so some chose to pay, and that's why that revenue came in, and some could choose, as you stated, not to, therefore, we should, we should get a bump in the next quarter.
Okay, so that's why the two different numbers, great.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Alrighty, uh, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Have a good evening, gentlemen.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the town manager's report, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mitchell School update.
Mitchell School update, we have, um, we, there was a Mitchell School, uh, meeting on Monday, um, which was yesterday. Uh, nothing major to report, they're still on track and on schedule. The, uh, 100, 100% design, uh, plans are being completed, uh, this month, and they should be off to the printer, uh, I believe on the 27th, so that is good news. It will go out to actual bid, uh, the end of this month, and, uh, bids will come back and an award will be made on December 7th, uh, which is the date of the next, uh, school building committee meeting, which is, uh, again, December 7th at 5:30. Um, once the award is made, presuming that the bids come in favorably, uh, and we can select one of the, uh, general contractors, uh, construction should begin in December, and, uh, and I've repeated many times, uh, we're looking at a July 8th, 2022 completion date, uh, which would put us ready for the, uh, 2022, uh, fall school year, so that is all on track. Again, the next, the next meeting, uh, there is not a meeting in November, the next meeting is Monday, December 7th at 5:30. And as I've said very often as well, you can get all the information that you would like at, uh, www.bridgewaterschoolproject.com, and, uh, all of the committees, um, presentations, reviews, minutes, agendas are all there for anybody to look at, so. Um, anticipating Counselor Fitzgibbons' question, it is on time. Um, and actually, the dates, uh, some of the completion date has been sort of moved forward, so that, that's even better news, but we are on date and so far on budget, we'll have a much better idea of where our budget will be, uh, once the general, uh, bids come in, in December, so. So that's what I have on the Mitchell.
Any questions?
Mr. President, he can't get away without me asking a question.
I haven't recognized you yet, let me take that into consideration. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Uh, when's, when's the next, what are the next important dates with the state, Mr. Dutton?
Um, the, uh, really the next important, uh, dates for the state, I think the, the plans have been submitted and responded to, and, um, let me just take a quick peek. Really, but, uh, those are the, uh, we've actually passed all the, the important, um, submittals to the state, so, uh, so we are just looking at going out to bid and then, uh, and then awarding a bid. We do that, obviously, the committee does that, we do that in conjunction with, uh, the MSBA, but at this point, we have, uh, I believe it was 10 pre-qualified general contractors. Uh, we were told at, uh, last night's meeting that all of those general contractors that pre-qualified, uh, were, were quality contractors. Uh, there were actually some surprises. There, um, people that normally would not bid on a job this small, quote unquote, um, are actually, uh, pre-qualified to bid on, on this one, so that, that's the good news.
And, and so, I, I'd just like to add an editorial comment, that's, that's great, but, you know, essentially now we can spend our own money and essentially then look to the state for reimbursement, so. You know, I'd like to thank the, uh, building committee for moving it through that process and jumping through every hoop that the state asked in the time that they asked it, so that we could get to this point and be ready for July 8th, uh, 2022 opening, so. Uh, thanks to the building committee, and thanks to you for serving on the building committee. That's all I have, sir, uh, Mr. George.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, uh, just a, a financial question. So, uh, we heard the bonding might go early because there's favorable rates right now, is there any update on that?
Uh, there is a brief update, we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, uh, to have that discussion with the financial advisor and the school, um, the school's, uh, business, uh, manager, so. Uh, we, uh, just based on some of the internal discussions, we're looking at possibly bonding between 30 and 35 million dollars now, while interest rates are ab, almost abnormally low. Um, there, according to the financial advisor, it doesn't appear that interest rates will be going up anytime soon, but regardless, uh, we do want to make sure that, uh, what we know what the low rates are now, and it may make a lot of sense to lock in at a rate that is substantially lower than what was budgeted, so. It's in the works.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to COVID-19 update.
Alright, COVID-19 update. Um, we have seen a slight increase in cases, uh, active cases over the last couple of weeks, uh, although I have to, uh, tell you that we have been holding fairly steady. Uh, the, the additional cases replace cases that are, that are coming off of quarantine. Um, we're also very attentive to the area towns, we've got, uh, some that have now moved as of last Wednesday have moved into the red category, um, which is simply a categorization that the state, uh, gives towns based on the, the number of cases per 100,000, uh, or prorated. So East Bridgewater, Hanson, Pembroke, Kingston, Hanover, all recent additions to the red category. Um, and our health agent does anticipate more towns will be in that direction, but we remain yellow, I don't see any inclination or any indication that we're going to be bumped into the red, but, uh, we will know tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, uh, if that is the case, but I don't see any indication now. Um, I think as everybody knows, uh, by now the town hall is open by appointment. Um, if there, uh, is anybody out there that needs to come in and, and, uh, address an issue inside town hall for some reason with staff, just call the department that you need to visit, and, uh, and they will set up an appointment, uh, for you, so that, that is the mechanism right now. We anticipate after early voting is, is completed, which. mechanism right now. We anticipate after early voting is is completed, which is uh the end of this month, by uh November second, we hope, assuming that everything is relatively stable, we hope to reopen um to the public on November second without uh the requirement of making any appointments. So that's that's where what we're looking at as a target. Um, and we're going to stick with that unless, as I say, there's some drastic uh drastic change. So that uh that's about what I have on the COVID.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Uh, Mr. Dutton, when I was walking in uh to the building tonight, I noticed the signage on the door indicated that the building was closed. We should probably update the signage to say the building is open by appointment only. That way, we don't give the public the wrong idea.
Uh, good catch. We actually have signage that will be going up tomorrow. Uh, it's getting laminated, so it doesn't shrivel up and blow away, but it'll go up tomorrow. But thank you.
All right, any other questions? Right, seeing none, moving on to McElwain property update.
Uh, McElwain, the uh good news is the McElwain project, I think everybody knows, uh, was funded by DHCD in their two thousand twenty round. Um, good news is that they got funded essentially in the not the second round, but sort of the middle round between the first and the second round, uh, which probably means nothing to most people, but that's uh is actually quite a testament to uh how DHCD sees this project um as as a really prime uh excellent project to to invest their money in. So that that has happened. Um, final construction plans for the project are being finalized, uh, being priced out for construction. Uh, the developer group is also finalizing proposals from bank lenders and and other equity investors uh to finalize their their uh their financing. Uh, there is uh the there is a house to the left of the um McElwain that that the development group owns, and that is uh currently being vacated so that they can re renovate thoroughly renovate that house. Um, so the tenants that are that are in there now are being relocated, and the developers, because state state federal money is involved, they have to uh follow the provisions of the Uniform Relocation Act, which requires that they uh move their tenants into other equivalent suitable housing. Uh, so they work very carefully with the tenants to make sure that that they do that. Um, overall, um, they believe that they'll have all the financings in place and ready to close in April and uh construction probably starting in April or early May. And that is, that's what I have on the McElwain.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Dutton, we haven't signed the final PNS, correct?
Uh, we have. We have.
Okay, so when?
It seems like a very long time ago, but we did.
Yeah. So did we? Have we gotten the funding from the PNS?
No, that will come in April. The entire, you know, all the financing happens and all the purchases happen in April at one one closing, which is a massive amount of paper, but.
Okay. Alrighty, great. All right, um, trash removal at Styles and Hart Park.
Uh, Styles and Hart, we do have, I did put in a uh work request for the highway department uh about a month ago. They um then got hit with a couple of windstorms and more cleanup than they had anticipated, but uh they should be out there this week. Uh, there is a fair amount of sort of trash, debris, you know, people used it a little bit as a dumping ground. Um, so they will be out there this week to clean that up, and we I are planning to at least secure that area temporarily um with either a chain uh or some sort of gate. Um, I think if for folks that know the entrance, there's a small little entrance off of Broad Street or a curb cut and a and a break in the in the uh guardrail on Broad Street. We will chain that up um so that the people can't get access there for right now uh while we plan out the rest rest of the project. So that's, but that is in the works. Um, picking up the the trash that's in there now and also getting the chain across there. So uh trash this week, chain uh may take a little little while longer, but that is in the works as well. So that is what I have there.
Any questions for the town manager, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Um, great action plan. Um, the the uh the trash is not only right at the entrance, I think you know that, but there's a there's a uh kids' playhouse halfway back on the trail toward the pond, and there's a campsite further back on the pond. Um, so so that all sounds great if we could get that done. If you need any volunteers, there's a lot of people waiting to help out. Um, and so whatever the highway department needs, uh, I'm sure we can throw in a few extra hands, too. Thank you.
That's excellent. I I thank you for that. That uh Steve Solvo, our environmental planner, has done a lot of work. Um, he's sort of recruited uh a number of volunteers so far, but uh I think he's planning last I saw from a message from him last week and the last week, I think he was planning a more robust cleanup day. Um, either later in the fall or Earth Day, which is in early spring. Um, so he was starting now to get that plan, but I'll I'll relay that uh offer to volunteer certainly, and he will take you up on that.
Any other questions? This is done. I do have one and and kind of what you just mentioned. So if we've got groups that coordinate the volunteer to clean up the site, or or I'll say any site for that fact, for parks, the town can make arrangements to actually transport the trash and dispose of it. We don't leave that up to the volunteers to take care of that, correct?
Oh, no, 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 absolutely not. No, we can certainly, you know, if we can provide, um, you know, bags, we can provide, uh, you know, a truck. Uh, if it's really in necessary, we can provide a dumpster, whatever whatever is needed to really uh help volunteers. We're happy to do that. Uh, and Steve, Steve's done a good job uh so far of of organizing organized one uh venture out um to to uh to sort of do a park analysis and and, you know, do a little trail cutting. So so he's gotten um gotten his feet wet, so to speak, on recruiting volunteers and putting them to good use. So, but absolutely, we'll provide provide the the hauling and all of that. So no, volunteers don't have to put garbage in their cars or trucks, absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on to townwide sidewalk maintenance.
All right, um, let me just uh give you sort of the lay of the land, then I'll show you. Uh, I'll share my screen and show you the technology that we use to to analyze some of this stuff. Um, overall, our the condition, and you'll see in a minute, the condition of our sidewalks is not awful. Um, but having said that, there are many, many areas that that need attention. Right now, we don't have a specific dedicated funding source uh to pay for any sidewalk.
Mr. Dutton, we're not we're not aspiring to be not awful, correct? That's that's not what we're aspiring to be. Okay.
No, we never aspire to be not awful. No, that's correct. Uh, we we always aspire to be something positive, so. So but we are not awful. Um, but we do, right now, we don't have a a dedicated funding source to to pay for, you know, more comprehensive sidewalk rebuilding. And um and we had anticipated giving the council a comprehensive road and sidewalk capital project uh for voter approval in April, but obviously uh we are putting the brakes on that uh due to COVID and the and the uh very sudden downturn in the economy. So we're going to, uh, but I'll keep you updated on that. I do want to show you here. Find it. Just to give you some idea of um how we look at this. So let me know if you can see. Um, if you can see my screen.
We can.
So we, if you recall, we asked uh we asked the company to come in and do a um do an analysis of our pavement and our sidewalks um about about a year ago. Um, and you're looking right now at the sidewalk analysis. Um, and overall, you could see the green. That's good. Uh, we don't have a lot of excellent, quite frankly, uh, but we have a lot of good. We have um a fair amount of fare, and then we do have some areas of poor, very poor uh sidewalks. So uh, I'll expand it out here and just give you uh an idea. So here is Hale Street. Uh, Hale Street's identified as one of the really bad sidewalks. Um, and there is uh there is a section of Hale Street, um, which doesn't look great. So I won't uh won't show you the whole thing, but that's that's uh, that's kind of what we have. Um, if we want to look at a quick example of, you know, how much it's going to cost to uh figure out how to how to address our our sidewalks over the course of the next several years, uh, we have this tool as well. Um, we can look at sidewalks. We can look at a three-year rebuilding effort. Um, and if we devote say twenty-five thousand dollars a year to it, uh, we can look and see overall townwide what that uh twenty-five thousand dollars will will uh look like, how it'll impact the sidewalks. And you can see here twenty-five thousand dollars a year actually won't get us to maintain the overall uh condition that we have right now. So we'll see a a decrease in the quality of our sidewalks over time. Also gives you um some information on on when which uh sidewalks need to be addressed first, if you are prioritize prioritizing those. And it can give you um it can give you some budgeting uh recommendations. If we were looking to um in year one, get all of our sidewalks to, you know, eighty-five, which is um yeah, definitely in the green. It can tell you that year one, we'd have to spend about a little over six hundred thousand dollars um to to get to that point. So so it's, I show you this just because uh it's it's both a condition report and a budgeting tool uh that we use and um and it's uh has been quite helpful and effective uh in terms of pavement management and and sidewalks as well. But the uh the news right now is that we don't have a specific funding source. The the highway department, roadways department does an excellent job, um, you know, patching what they can uh with the budget that they have. Uh, but obviously, um, we we, as Counselor Fitzgibbon's pointed out, we aspire to have a walkable town. Um, and uh and obviously, the condition of sidewalks is critical uh to in order to have a walkable town. So so we do uh, we do know that we have to dedicate find a funding source and dedicate a significant amount more to to both sidewalks and our roadways. But that's uh, that is where we stand on uh sidewalks right now.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton, Mr. Susa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, when you walk up Main Street away from downtown, where all those trees are planted right between the sidewalk and the curb, the roots on those trees are very, very shallow. In some areas, the roots have brought the asphalt to bright up. Some areas, two inches or more with cracks that wide as well. And in the winter, when they clean the sidewalks, they don't get them bare. So people can't see those things. So we're coming into the winter, we're going to, are we going to wait till someone falls and gets hurt and sues us before we say, oh, we have to go and react? This has been a subject that's come up a few times now. And we just keep putting it off. We keep putting it off. We just wait, we react to accidents, but we don't get the job done. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes, Mr. Dutton, um, could you call up and present on your screen again the green, the like the townwide look? Or? I just want to point out a couple of things, and I want to I want to see the video that accompanies those areas.
Okay, let me see if I can get that back up. Okay.
Okay, so what I'd like to see is uh Pleasant Street between Elm Street and the Route twenty-four highway, the sidewalk on that on that. And why it's good. I I I don't understand why it's good. I want to see the the movie to understand why it's good.
All right, so on the uh the rating. So the rating that this program assigns to it, and unfortunately, it's like it's called the SCI rating, and unfortunately, it's, I can't pull the, well, in any case, I'll show you the movie.
Oh, this is must have been after the, all the all the overgrowth was cut back because most of the year, it's overgrowth right there, and it's impassable to walk on. Okay, it's the so it's it's okay, except for the fact that most of the year, it's overgrown. The other place I'd like to look is Main Street between, say, um, say Pearl Street and um and the and West Bridgewater. And this is what's really, this is what really offends me, and it's right near Mr. Susan. I'm sure he can, he can vouch for it when when I pointed out. So Main Street, yeah, for oh, from Oak, yeah, yeah, from, yeah, Pearl Street, Oak Street, somewhere in there.
Okay, on um.
On Main Street, going north from Pearl around.
Street, the Main Street sidewalk?
On the Main Street sidewalk, yeah, going north from, you know, Hammond, Lawrence, Pearl, whatever, toward uh toward West Bridgewater. No, the other, the other side. Northbound, if you will. Yeah, that one. Yeah, I'm I'm not sure if that's what folks experience, if you, if it keeps going.
Keep going, of course, you get to the town line.
Yeah. Because what what I've what I've actually seen um repeatedly, unfortunately, is uh many of our residents uh who live in the of uh in the Bridgewater Housing Authority there on the right uh will on a Sunday morning go down to Cumberland Farms and get a coffee, and they're in a motorized wheelchair, and they cannot access the sidewalk, and they have to go up Route twenty-eight in their motorized wheelchair on the side of the road. And, you know, to me, that's that's really not acceptable. Um, and I don't, I just don't understand how a good sidewalk would require somebody to to do that. So I I I I'm questioning the ratings there. I I don't question the need all around the town for repairs. I think there's a lot more than what this tool is frankly telling us. Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Gallagher, you had a question? Mr. Gallagher, you're on mute. Let's try that again.
So we saw, we thank you, Mr. President. We saw the um presentation several months ago about the the roads and and how the company prioritized the roads for us, and now we're seeing with the sidewalks. And I I I agree with what Counselor Fitzgibbon is saying. It is kind of kind of, you know, embarrassing a little bit when you see what might appear to be a decent sidewalk, but yet someone who has a disability needs to be in the road to to go downtown from that area. Um, so to me, it's not about rating. It's about priority priorities, and I think that we can all see the residents can see that there's an awful lot of sidewalks in this town that that do need a repair. Summer Street just pops out to me is, and I'm sure there are worse uh worse sidewalks, but that road, that that was sidewalk. just pops out to me as, and I'm sure there are worse, worse sidewalks, but that road, that, that was sidewalks are horrible. There's almost a full, uh, tree coming out of the road, coming out of the sidewalk. So I just think that as we move forward and, and I know that Flag Street is supposed to get redone. Uh, we, we approve something for Cross Street. Be great if Cross Street could get a sidewalk as you look into the, the, the plan to see the engineering study for that. But, um, a lot of work needs to be done, but you know, maybe we need to start planning every year to say, okay, we're going to do this sidewalk this year and probably Main Street is probably a state road. So maybe state funding could, or more state funding, not just the chapter 90 money that comes from the state, we help with the other roads. But I'd like to see a plan come forward that when you request money from us to do an engineering study or repave a road in town, perhaps with that should come the sidewalk with that road as well. That's just my two cents.
I, I would only follow up with that. Counselor Gallagher is absolutely right. We, we don't, um, we don't approve any, you know, we do a lot of repair, but any, any new road construction, Cross Street definitely will have sidewalks. That's a complete streets job, uh, which will require sidewalks. And, and anytime we make major repairs, we, we, you know, anticipate addressing sidewalks. I think it's, it's those roads that are not getting major repair that we have to figure out a way to finance at this point, but point well taken.
Mr. Colin, Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Dutton, you noted, you mentioned that if we had spent $25,000 a year, we would still, our roads would, we'd have a net depreciation in the quality of our sidewalks. Is that right?
Right.
What would it take to, to maintain the quality of the sidewalks? Can you?
I can, I can figure that out for you, probably not right this second to give you an accurate figure. But I don't want you to think that we don't invest in any sidewalks because we do, uh, through the highway budget. What I am saying is that we don't have a very specific dedicated line item and a funding source for, you know, better and, and more significant highway, uh, sidewalk reconstruction. So, so in the, in their budget, they do, um, they do allocate hours and they allocate materials to, to sidewalk repair and maintenance. Not enough, but they do, they do allocate some. So, but I can, I can get you that figure of what it would, exactly what it would take according to the, the, at least this, uh, system to, to stay even. I can certainly get that.
Right, perhaps it would be useful to the council if you could present a few different scenarios with several different spending levels and what that would, would, would earn for, what, what that would garner in terms of improvements.
I definitely can do that.
Thank you.
All righty, any additional questions?
Hi, Ayesha has raised her hand a couple of times.
Council, I don't see your hand.
I don't know, it keeps going away. But nonetheless, um, to, through you to the town manager. Well, I think it's important to have, um, the funding to fix the sidewalks and have them be, you know, maintained. We actually need the, the staff and the, you know, highway department and the public works department to be able to maintain it. So while we might be able to have funding, if we don't have the staff and, um, the team and the equipment to be able to maintain it, it's not, it's still going to go nowhere. So as we look at the overall bigger problem, um, we have to be, um, thinking about the, you know, the systematic or the root cause. Not to have a pun on, uh, Mr. Frank Souza's, uh, root, uh, comments, but on the root cause of what's really going on, right? These things are deteriorating and not being maintained and to Counselor Fitzgibbons' point about the overgrowth and things like that. If we had a larger team that was able to support kind of all the needs across town, then things may not be in the six, the, um, conditions that we're in. So as you look at Mr. Colin Bodis' point about, you know, the 25,000 or more that would be needed, I would love to understand what levels of staff would need to be added to be able to maintain, um, and keep, um, that investment that we're putting in, um, in tip top shape.
That's easily doable, yeah.
Thank you. All righty, seeing, I don't see any more questions, uh, items for next meeting. Please reach out to Mr. Dutton with any items that you'd like to have on the agenda.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? George, I, I've got one right now because it's been, I've mentioned it a few times and we haven't put it on the agenda and I don't believe it's a town manager's report. Actually, I think it's a presentation. But follow up on Ms. Loesch's comments. We need to understand not only the sidewalks, but the roads, the town buildings. We talked about the town building maintenance plan. We need to know what actually we should be spending on all of these things that we just kicked the can down the road on. And I really would like the town manager, the finance director to put something together to say, this is what we need. We might not have identified funding sources. That's fine. That's, you know, our job working with them together to figure it out. But if we don't know the entire picture, we're just going piecemeal at it. And I'd rather not go piecemeal at it. I'd rather have a whole presentation of, you know, to maintain police and fire equipment, to maintain town buildings, to maintain town roads and sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. This is what we need and this is the budget we need. Not only a capital plan, but also a ongoing, um, maintenance budget plan every year. Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Uh, we don't have anything for discussions, committee reports, any, any committees like to do an update or a report?
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Loesch.
Thank you, just wanted to, um, call out that everyone should have received their packet for the town manager's review. So please be sure to take your time to fill that out. Sorry, I muted myself, um, to fill that out and to get it back in a timely manner so we can, um, get that done. Uh, and just to let the public know that that has been kicked off earlier this month and that we'll be able to have, um, a timely report, but we'll call out again that we would love to hear, um, how, um, rules and procedures or whichever the right, uh, committee is, is coming along with goals. So that we are not in the situation that we have been in in future, in previous years where we're, um, giving out goals in May and June and then wanting a, a mid-year update as they're just being sent out. So that's just a quick, a quick, um, public service announcement for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, moving to legislation for action. Order, oh, FY 20-017, transfer order, CPC recommendation, Central Square Congregational Church. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to, three to O to recommend this measure at their meeting held on September 21st, 2020. Finance Committee met on October 19th, 2020. The disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted on this evening pending a disposition from the Finance Committee. I don't have that in front of me. Do we know what the Finance Committee final vote was?
Believe the Finance Committee voted four to two, if I'm not mistaken.
Four to two, two, in favor, okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's a second, any discussion?
None.
President?
Yes.
Um, at first glance, I, I, it seems like a, a application worthy of serious consideration. I, I would point to the, the sources of funding for the total project. The church is asking for $200,000 and they're also citing the receipt of 1.348 million dollars from a, a private capital campaign. So the CPC guidelines, um, emphasize that the applicant should have some of their own skin in the game and then this application demonstrates that. So I imagine we would, uh, I would hope that we would look favorably upon this application. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Wood? I'll just say, um, I, I was, I was present when the, um, advocate brought their first draft in. There was a short discussion on separation of church and state. And I think it's worthwhile noting that, um, you know, the, the committee and everybody else took that into effect so that the, the, you know, the money being spent through the CPC, which is in effect a, a tax and, um, you know, also from the state is not being spent just on a church, but on a, on a building that has significant community involvement with the town of Bridgewater. And that, um, I think that it specifically said that they leave religious artifacts out of the, out of the project where the money is going to be spent. So I, I'm going to be in support of this.
Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, uh, through you, direct, um, a question to Mr. Rollins. Is he, uh?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm just curious and having read some of the memorandum that were circulated to us, by and among yourself, the town manager, uh, CPC, uh, and apparently a, a, an outside consultant, uh, Goldson. And I, I know that it, at a point, and this may go back somewhat earlier in the year, it might be in the May-June timeframe. I think that a memorandum that you had authored, cited substantial similarities to the Acton case, which I think was really the whole, um, you know, crux of the issue, uh, as to, you know, church and state involvement here. And, and I'm wondering if, if you still maintain that there are indeed substantial factual similarities, um, between that case and the application that is before us. Because I, I don't know that a lot of the questions have, have really been resolved. You know, particularly as it relates to the, the so-called three factor test that the court would apply.
Did we lose him?
Uh, yes, we did.
You want me to wait for him before I answer?
I would, let's, 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 let's give him a minute.
There he is. We lost you, Fred.
Okay.
So, so I didn't hear the end of your question, but, um, I, I do think it is similar in a lot of regards to the Acton case. I do, uh, and I have given explicit opinions to those of the CPC that asked, uh, whether or not it fits the three factor test of the Acton case, which I do not believe it does. I, I think that the three factor test as stated, uh, under the Acton case, which explicitly involves the anti aid amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution. You have to analyze, is the primary purpose of the funding to aid this particular church rather than to serve the proper purpose of historic preservation? I'm not aware of any historical designation of the church. I understand it's in the center of town, I get that. But, but I, in the Acton case, it was actually, they were putting, um, historic covenants on it and they still found that that wasn't enough. Their case is somewhat distinguishable in that it was the stained glass that they were seeking there. So that, that question one is a little harder to answer. Question two asks whether the effect of the funding is to substantially aid the church. And when you look at the Acton case, uh, what it, what it essentially says, uh, and this is a quote from that case. It says here, "The grants would help defray planning and restoration costs that the church would otherwise have to shoulder on its own, allowing the money saved to be used to support its core religious activities." I think that's clearly what's happening. I, I, again, I, I think with boards and with you all, I can give you my legal opinion, what I think a court might do or not do. And you all get to make your own decisions on that, right? So, um, that, that, that was my interpretation of section two. And then section three talks about whether the funding avoids a risk that prompted the passage of the anti aid amendment. So the anti aid amendment was established in 1853 when there were significant things, uh, that were being funded, uh, by government taxes that related to one religion over another. Um, and so I think that was a huge part of the Massachusetts Constitution in 1853 because they wanted to promote the separation of church and state. So whatever church that is, whatever religion that is. So, uh, when they implemented the anti aid amendment in 1917, the three things they look at and that the Kaplan case looks at is the risk that liberty of conscience would be infringed whenever a citizen was taxed to support the religious institution of others. So you look at that, you look at the risk that public funding would result in improper government entanglement with religion, undermining the independence and dignity of churches, right? Because churches want to also be independent, right? They don't want to be entangled with government funding. That's part of religious freedom. So that works both ways. Um, and then you have part three that talks about the risk that the public support of religious institutions would threaten civic harmony, making divisive questions of religion or political question. Now, I haven't heard of any opposition to the project. I wasn't involved in any of the hearings. I don't know if other religious institutions or groups would oppose this that pay taxes in the town of Bridgewater. But all of those things are what have to be analyzed when making a determination under the Kaplan case and under the constitutionality of funding a church for renovations, right? And so that was my analysis. That was the point of my memorandum. I did not give an explicit opinion or answer because I wasn't asked to, uh, as part of that memorandum. The question presented to me was, is it possible to fund it? Is there a strict prohibition on this? There is not. And Acton walks a very tight rope in terms of what you have to look at to thread the needle here. And so, uh, obviously the CPC has found that that needle was threaded. And, and that's really my take on it.
I think, um, I think you'd agree that there's the potential here for litigation regardless of the outcome of this application.
Yes.
And, and I think that, um, you know, as the second prong of the test, and you referred to this, I do think that it's reasonable to assume that, um, the money that the church, uh, would be, would be, uh, saving as a result of the town's contribution through CPC, uh, would in fact help them to offset other expenses. And in that regard, I think it might be taken that it is money in fact being used to support a particular church. And as to the point of, of the third prong, and you just spoke about the, um, the need for, to en- ensure civic harmony. I also don't know of any particular church that would, uh, or congregant who would be adverse to this proposal. But I certainly can envision the possibility that another church, um, similarly situated in the town. Stage, which would have similar structural, uh, needs to be met, uh, might come before it. Putting us in a, in a rather awkward position. Again, I think that I, I do agree that the similarities to that Acton case, um, you know, are relevant. And in fact, in some regards here, they really exceed some of the particulars of the Acton case. Certainly in terms of dollars, in the Acton case, we're looking at something of the order of $50,000. But we're talking here, $200,000, uh, out of a total renovation budget of a million and a half, I think. A pretty substantial chunk. And I just wonder that, um, it, it may not, I wonder that it might actually just, you know, uh, open the door for scrutiny, uh, from any taxpayer in the town. Who in fact, as you well know, might well find, um, support from organizations that would, uh, care to see this issue, uh, pushed ahead in the courts. So I think it's something we have to be aware of and, uh, you know, just in terms of what actually is being proposed. Yes, it's nothing quite as, it's not the religious imagery like the stained glass window in the Acton case. Uh, we're talking here about the church, uh, steeple. But it seems to me that many of the particulars in terms of the proposed renovations to that church really fall into the category of, uh, routine maintenance rather than historic preservation. And I think that would be a factor that would perhaps be a tipping point, uh, in consideration of the, of the three factor test.
Mr. President?
Mr. Colombotus.
Through you to, I guess you did the town manager or the town attorney. Have we received any opinions from the Community Preservation Coalition, their director, or anyone on that staff as to the legitimacy of this application?
I don't believe anyone, and Michael can correct me if I was, if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't believe anyone other than myself was ever asked to render an actual opinion on my position. And frankly, the question that I was presented by the committee wasn't whether or not I thought it was illegal under the Mass Constitution, under the Acton case. It was, can something like this be done? And so that was the question that I answered. But for those members that reached out to me, which I, I gave them the option to do, I gave my very direct opinion about what I thought, based on the information I had. I don't like to step over boards. I don't think that is my role as the town attorney. I think my role is to give legal advice and let people know what the pros and cons of that advice are, and then they make determinations. So I think I was probably the only person that was asked for specifics. Michael may have even been asked at one point, but I certainly was.
I think Counselor Colombotus's question about the Community Preservation Coalition, I, I did not reach out to them. I don't know if, if Carlton might have information regarding that, but I, I have not had any contact with them specific to this, this application.
Mr. President, can we hear from Mr. Hunt?
Yes, Dr. Hunt.
Yes, sir.
Specifically, specifically to the question, please.
The specific question, as I understand it is, is did the, our Community Preservation Committee reach out to the Coalition? The answer is yes. The answer is also, they don't render legal opinions. But they did point to the guidance that they provide, which is fairly consistent with what Attorney Rollins said regarding the separation of church and state and the act that we're discussing right now.
Dr. Hunt, I have one question for you. Was there any opposition to this application during the discussions with the CPC?
There were none. We had one dissenting vote. We took two votes. The first vote was, did it meet the three-factor test? That vote passed six-zero in terms that it did, it did meet the test. And then we took a second vote as to the amount of money that we would present. There was a three-hour discussion on that, and that vote was six-to-one in favor of funding $2,000, $200,000. The one dissenting vote, to answer your question, was because they didn't agree with the amount of money.
Thank you.
And, and the percentage of the money requested is 13%, whereas the Acton request was 96% of the project.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Any additional questions? Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Through you to the town manager, I believe. Did we not also fund through CPC something at the Unitarian Church several years back?
I believe we funded a couple of different items with the Unitarian Church a few years ago. The, the crux of the issue is that the Acton case that, that Counselor Chase and, Attorney Rollins have mentioned came after that. That decision came after those fundings.
So. But, but I guess to my point that it seemed like the folks in the town of Bridgewater had no problem with funding the amount of money needed to help keep that church the way it essentially looks. And that's what we're trying to do here as well. You know, I, I usually put my faith and trust in the townspeople of Bridgewater, as well as the higher power beyond that. So, you know, I, I just let my fellow counselors think about that.
Any additional questions?
Comment? Can I make a comment?
No, sorry. All righty, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase? Is he here?
Yes. Sorry.
Okay, you are there. Mr. Chase, your vote was?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
All right. Moving on to order, oh, FY21-018, Old High School Purchase and Sale Agreement Ratification, Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District. The Budget and Finance Committee met on October 19, 2020, and will provide a disposition of the full council. The Finance Committee met on October 19, 2020. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. The measure may be finally considered this evening pending the aforementioned committee dispositions. So memory shows me correctly, Finance Committee voted 3-0, and I've been told that the Budget and Finance Committee voted 5-0.
Motion to approve?
The other way around.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the other way around, 3-0, 5-0. It was all unanimous. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll take it if Mr. Wood doesn't want to speak first.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, go ahead.
No, I, I just, I'd just like to thank everybody involved, that this has been going on for a long time. Definitely want to thank the town of Ranham for working very closely with us, particularly Selectman Pacheco, who, who did a great job, in my opinion, working with us and, and helping all of their staff and whatnot. I'd also like to thank the Bridgewater-Ranham School Committee for all of their hard work, and particularly Chairman Mike Dolan, for all the work that he's, he's done to, to get it to this point. And, and I'd be remiss, Mr. Gallagher, if I didn't thank you for, for all your efforts as well to get, to get this into the shape it is. So I, I firmly support it. It's something that needs to be done, and we can put this chapter behind us, and I'm, I'm really excited to vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. Wood? Yeah, I'll just echo the same comments and add that, you know, this has been a long, open, unresolved issue, and it's, it's good to bring this together. A lot of people did come together to, to resolve it. And hopefully this, you know, in the, in the light of other things that we've talked about with funding and moving students around and things like that, hopefully that this clarifies a number of items that have been open between the, the district and the two towns. So it's really good to get this closed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
All right. Moving on to old business, we have none. Moving on to new business, order, oh, FY21-019, Acceptance of Grant, Center for Tech and Civic Life, COVID-19 Response Grant. I'll entertain a motion to refer this to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Mr. President, without objection, could we lump the next four together and just send them all to Budget and Finance and Finance?
Any objection?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion?
If there's any discussion on, on any of them, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just.
That's good, because I just called discussion. So thank you very much for allowing that. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who would like to make a comment, please keep it to three minutes. And for the record, just state your name and your street. Dr. Hunt?
Carlton Hunt, 80 Austin Street. Thank you for the vote tonight, supporting the CPC's recommendation. One thing I forgot to say, that we had 14 letters of support, including the Historical Commission, which is a requirement for any historic structure that's not on the macro site. But more importantly to me is the fact that the town needs, the council needs to start budgeting for maintenance of the sidewalks and the street. I'm quite aware that the complete streets policy that was passed some time ago has not been followed in specific. And I will point to Aldrich Street, which was resurfaced, and no sidewalks were installed. So I'm a little bit concerned that it's willy-nilly in terms of when we do the complete streets and when we do not. And I would request that the council seriously consider establishing an annual amount of money to in fact invest in our street maintenance and our sidewalk maintenance. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens who would like to comment? Excuse me, seeing none. Counselor comments. I'll start with Counsel Gallagher.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Loesch?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Yep. Counselor Chase?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Counselor Wood?
The, the discussion on the sidewalks, thank you, President George. The, the discussion on the sidewalks is a good one. There's also, I should have chimed in, then, there's a low-cost thing that we could do also. And Dr. Hunt's comments made me think of this. I had a call from a constituent off of Oak Street a couple weeks ago, who, he's got a young child, and they were trying to walk on Oak Street, which does not have any sidewalk at all. And they had the usual trouble of, you know, people running a, you know, a straight line for 40 miles an hour, things. So there might be a, an additional effort made, and I'm just suggesting now for the town manager to think about. Where streets that don't have sidewalks, it might be a, a low-cost effort just to take a look at those. As, you know, we just heard a street was paved, no sidewalk, and maybe there's some planning that can be done. Again, you know, low cost for, for that capital. And so just a thought. Second thing, you know, we had a, we had a FinCom vote that was split tonight, that we heard about 4-2. And this is where a couple weeks ago, I, I made an effort to try to get more communication between FinCom and the council. Obviously, there were a number of people that knew about the subject and could speak to it. But it's an opportunity where we can listen to the dissenting voices, as well as the, the positive votes, and understand what FinCom had as, as a, as a discussion, and why there were some concerns about that. And if the vote had gone the opposite way, it would have been good to hear, you know, what, what the, the issue was. So, you know, it was a, it was a summary of the vote, and it would have been great to hear in more detail. I will comment about the room here. As, as President George said, there's four of us in here. I think I probably would have ended up being more comfortable at home in a remote situation. I think we're quite away, away from getting back to normal. And so, you know, we'll, we'll have to hopefully keep everybody involved through Zoom and other, other outlets here. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, Counselor Souza?
Well, I hope the beginning of the talks on the sidewalk repairs, something gets done before someone gets injured and sues us. Facing in front of me are these little things where we come in here to do our early voting. My wife and I have already done it, and I understand there's a number of good people who have been doing it. Please get out and vote. Look at the schedule. It's on the website. Take advantage of it. Thank you.
Counselor Colombotus?
I'd just like to express my opinion that I think accessible and safe sidewalks are really a critical component in any sort of economic and community development effort. We've got a really nice downtown. We're lucky to have it. And to make it more available to people, we need to make sure that they can get there safely and comfortably. So I, I think we need to devote a lot of attention to this issue in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad to be back, even if it's just the four of us. And thank you for making this happen, Mr. President. Second on my list is to make sure, send out a thank you and a shout out to all the teachers in the school district for their yeoman's work they're doing around trying to teach hybrid, remote, follow, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I, I believe I speak for the council when I, when I say that, you know, we certainly appreciate all your efforts. And finally, between our last meeting and today's meeting, Fire Chief Tom Levy retired. And, you know, one of the, one of the things, as everyone knows who's sat on a, on this committee anyway, is whenever anyone has a problem with someone who works in the town, you're one of the first people to hear about it. And so I will tell you, I never heard anyone come up to me and say they had a problem with Chief Levy. That just speaks to his integrity, his commitment to the job, his family's commitment to the job. Obviously, his brother was, was a lieutenant before him, and his father was a chief before him. Thank you to Chief Levy and his entire family for their service to the town of Bridgewater. And we certainly appreciate all he did. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. Yeah, it is very different to be sitting in these council chambers with just the four of us. But I also want to say thank you to Mr. Dutton, our head of IT, Justin Viera, and, and more importantly, our town council clerk, Ann Holmberg, for all of the work that they have done to finally, in my opinion, get us up to the, at least the 20th century. We're getting close to the 21st. But I think this is just a step in the direction of the different norm. I'm not going to call it a new norm. It's going to be a different norm. And I think in this journey to get back to something that we can consistently expect, we're going to have some bumps in the road. But this was, this was something that we needed to get done. We've got the technology set up. We were able to, I think, run a pretty efficient meeting. We didn't run into any hiccups. And again, a lot of people working behind the scenes. And we're going to continue working on that so that when we can get the entire council back together, as well as the public, we're still going to leverage technology to allow people to participate that normally weren't able to participate because they physically could not be here. And I think if we can give people that venue or that, that tool, whatever you want to call it, for engagement, we need to embrace it. We need to promote it, and we really, we need to support it. The other thing I just want to mention too is, in the town manager's report, that we do have a, the town hall is open by appointment. And it's, you know, it's, it's a step, again, a step in the right direction. It's also good to have a target date to open up the town hall for general public. But it's always with the caveat that we have to follow state mandates, as well as what's going on in our local community to make sure that it's safe for everybody. And I, I don't think anyone is sitting there trying to push this off because they like the way it's set up right now. I think, I think if you polled people, the vast majority would like it pre-COVID, obviously. But we're always going to do what's in the best interest of all as best we can. It may run a little bit slower than everyone expects or wants, but we will get there step by step. So that's about it. We don't have an executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Alright, everyone have a good night.
Good night.
Night.